Maybe I'll redo that just for the sake of the recording. Calling to order, the special meeting of the Sustainability Committee for the town of North Stonington, July 8th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Now go through roll call, Alexis Khan.
Tula Bell Strasse.
John Lindsay.
Greg Vasulo.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen. I don't think, we don't have to, because we're not voting on any like minutes or anything like that now. So I think we can just go right into the agenda items. Items, if that's right, am I missing something?
That sounds great.
Okay. So, um, I've already kind of previewed this to some of you, but we're really, really thrilled to have Abe here. And is it Hilding Solario? Is that the appropriate pronunciation from the Sustainable CT program? He's the Community Outreach Manager. And so he essentially has been, for lack of a better term, a point of contact for anything related to the grant matching program. I'm sure your job description is a lot broader than that, but that's how I know you, is for the grant matching program. And so wanted to invite him here tonight because there were some questions that arose in last meeting about, you know, what, what types of activities we could try to submit for the grant matching program for Sustainable CT? And, you know, how many could be going at any given time? And what are the fundraising amounts that are, you know, that we can put forth? So we just thought that what better way to have all of our questions answered than to have it straight from the horse's mouth? So thank you, Abe, for being here. And also thank you to everybody for your flexibility on the change in schedule. Because I know that that was kind of a last minute thing, so I appreciate everyone's accommodation.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for having me. Thanks for everything you guys are doing also to like broadly to promote sustainability in town, but also to work on and with Sustainable CT.
We're all excited about it. So Abe, I don't know if you want to just kind of generally go through the high level terms? And I know some of our questions were about, you know, specifically like, you know, how many we could do at one time, what's applicable and that kind of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll give like sort of the standard spiel and do a high level overview. And then, um, just like, I'm gonna do it quickly. So cut me off at any point if you guys have a question or like something is relevant to something you've already talked about. Just like butt in, let me know. I'd rather have this be a conversation than me just talking at you guys. So like in broad terms, the match fund, it's a dollar for dollar matching grant program through which folks in registered towns, again, you just gotta be registered, no certification necessary, can access funding for projects that align really broadly with the Sustainable CT action roadmap. So like, I think probably the first and maybe the most important thing to clarify for you guys who are doing Sustainable CT work, like you see those actions, right? 2.3.2, super specific. There's like step by step, here's exactly what you have to do. You have to do this document, form this committee, change this regulation, whatever. It's like highly specific, largely municipally related things. The match fund is meant to be broader than that. So that it takes our, let's look at like, I'm gonna get the action wrong now because we changed it. But whatever the Managed Woodlands and Forest Action is, I think it's like 2.9 or used to be 2.9. So 2.9.2 might be hyper specifically like multiple steps. Form a forestry advisory commission, have the commission create like a plan with an arborist. Then, once you've created that plan, now you can start like identifying target areas and doing tree planting there. So there's like really clear steps that you have to do. There's templates, there's like a pathway to how you do that. For the match fund, sure, if there were costs associated with that, you could apply for funding for doing that. But also, like folks in your town or the local nonprofit, a commission, alliance club, boy scout troop, girl scouts, whatever it is, they probably don't want to do that hyper specific thing that really pertains to the municipality and to your regulations and to developing smart policy. Instead, they might just want to get out there and plant trees. So simply anything that aligns with the objective of one of our actions, which is that broader like mission, why am I doing this thing? That's sort of like what speaks to that. And so every action has one of those. It has the steps, but it also has an objective. So like the Managed Woodlands and Forest Action may be manage woodlands and protect forests and create green spaces in your community. So then anything that aligns with that, with that broader mission based objective is also eligible for funding. So I think like for the match fund, that's the really important thing to understand is if you're looking at a food systems project, sort of if you ask yourself like holistically, does this seem like it aligns with the mission of this action? And is it a public project? Yes, then it's gonna be a fit for the match fund. So like, that's the first thing to look at. If projects align directly with actions and subactions, that's great, that's a clear fit. But they can also be broader than that with the idea being that this makes the program more relevant to like the community at large. And it sort of moves our scope out and brings in other people into the work. So that I think is like really important to understand because sometimes the people who are pursuing certification and doing the actions can get really steeped in that and how specific it is, whereas the match one is meant to take like a community focus on it. In terms of like dollars, so the vast majority of projects, they can receive up to 7,500 from us. So if you had, I mean crowdfunding is, I guess, an important part to add in here. So all of the fundraising is done as a match to community investment in projects. Unlike a traditional one to one matching grant program where you'd say, great, we want 5,000 from you. And we're gonna demonstrate that we have 5,000 here from the Community Foundation of Eastern CT. We say you have $0 right now. You have a $10,000 project. We commit to providing 5,000 of it as a match to 5,000 raised from community. So like, that's one part. I assume you guys already had that covered, but like, it's an important part to clarify is that it's local donations, although they're not actually geographically restricted, they end up largely being local donations where people, local organizations, businesses, whatever, are contributing to the projects. Outside of that, so if you have a project that's up to 15,000 bucks, you can get a dollar for dollar matching grant, 7,500 from us, 7,500 crowdfunding. Of course, like other sources, municipal budget dollars, institutional money, up to certain thresholds can also be passed through and matched. So we can talk more about like what those thresholds are, the dollar amounts and things like that. And, you know, when you guys have questions. But then, so energy projects have a higher cap. So if you had someone in your town that wanted to, I mean, I guess like put solar panels on a roof and it was a fairly small roof, those can get up to $15,000. So if you had a $30,000 energy project, whether it's solar, energy efficiency, as long as it's public again, or in this case, the energy projects can also be for local nonprofits. So they could get that higher match cap, it's double for that. Some of the funding is chunked into categories now. So we have like our basket that's general, anything that aligns with Sustainable CT's work, there's money for that. There's another chunk of funds that are specifically available for energy efficiency and renewables. And then there's another chunk that are dedicated towards composting and food waste. So those are sort of like the three broad baskets now. Everything, composting, energy. So there's, you know, some specific funding for different things. In terms of the, the number of projects that could be going on anytime, there's really no limit in a town. We want to be equitable in that we want the money to be distributed all over the state to different people, different groups, different towns. But it's a first come, first served program. So the only restriction is that one entity, whether that's the municipality itself, the Sustainability Committee, local nonprofit, three people walking down the street who want to do a project, all of those folks are eligible to lead a project, right? There's no restriction on who can actually lead a project, access the funding through us. But that entity, that group can only be actively crowdfunding for one project at a time. But you could have the, a boy scout, the Lions Club, local nonprofit, land trust, and the Sustainability Committee, all of whom are leaving, leading projects simultaneously. So there's no limit to what you could do in your town, although like, there's probably a default limit to how much crowdfunding you can do. If you have six campaigns live at the same time, there's only so many people, there's only so many donations you can bring in. So, I mean, like, the limit is probably what's actually feasible to raise from community and what their capacity is to get engaged on these projects.
So, quick question, Abe. So let's say, is that only one at a time through one sponsoring kind of organization or, you know, group of people? Or is it per calendar year? Like, so let's say the Sustainability Committee sponsored and completed fundraising on one project that finished in September, and then we went to do another one from September to December, that's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not running at the same time?
It's just the crowdfunding. So you guys could, let's say that you guys were leading the project and you were doing a, I don't know, a bike project, something like that. Crowdfund from August through to the end of September, you start doing the work. You could immediately then at the start of October, start a new project, start fundraising for it. The project doesn't even have to be finished, the crowdfunding campaign just has to be finished.
Got it. And you mentioned the energy had doubled, so it was up to 15,000 for an energy related practice. Then you mentioned composting. Is composting also a bucket that has a higher?
Same cap, so 7,500.
Okay, okay.
The composting projects by and large have, like, if you guys were looking to do a food scraps hauling project in town, right? Contract with Blue Earth or Waste Management Company, set up bins at the transfer station, folks can show up and drop off their food scraps. That would probably cost, I don't know, somewhere between like $4,000 to $8,000 for a year's worth of equipment, startup costs and hauler fees. So in most cases, the, like a $15,000 combined right between the match and the crowdfunding, that would cover the costs of most composting or food waste programs anyways. The only ones we've seen so far where that cap is, isn't sufficient is where folks are looking to buy like in vessel composting machine. It can take like 150, 300 pounds a day, throw the food in there, chops it up, it whirs, it's got some enzymes and breaks it down. We supported a project in Stanford that did that. Those can cost, I don't know, $30,000 to $50,000 for the machines. So in those cases, we might be, you know, that would be contingent on probably the town contributing money or grants coming in from somewhere else. But for the most part, the composting projects just don't need the higher cap.
Got it, okay.
So what else? I don't know, I mean, I, I don't want to just like, kind, sort of stream of consciousness, throw information out at you guys. So if you have questions about, I mean, other things about how the program works, what the crowdfunding looks like. I mean, those are sort of the, the common ones because the crowdfunding is what's really unusual about the program, right? Like a matching grant program is not an unusual thing, the match to community investment is. I guess one other thing to clarify, I know I already mentioned it, but like, the program is meant to be sort of community led. So the projects, they don't have to get approval from the town, they don't have to come from the town, it doesn't have to be a committee. It really can be anyone. They don't even have to live in town, right? It could be someone that's outside who has some relationship and wants to come in and lead a project. Anyone can lead a project. You don't need to be a 501(c)(3), you don't need formal status, we can grant to individuals or to informal groups. So just like as you guys are talking with people, you know, and like hearing about potential projects, it really is anyone who's eligible to participate and access the funds.
That's awesome.
So I guess I just have like a logistical question on the crowdfunding. Like, is that just something that's done within the name of our committee? I mean, and then where does that money go? Do we need to have a separate account?
Yeah, that's a good question. So in general, the crowdfunding is, it's done like in the name of whoever or whatever organization is leading the project. So Alexis, the other one was done by the, the land trust by Avalonia. Like that project said, Avalonia, whatever is a 501(c)(3) tax exempt organization, tax ID this. It says it right there on the patronicity page. So in that case, they provided their own bank account information and all the funds raised online, plus the matching grant went there. If you guys were to lead a project, I assume being like an entity within the town, that the town would serve as the fiscal sponsor, so you'd use their tax ID. And they'd either, I mean, in the past, when towns either themselves lead projects or sponsor projects, they've in some cases had to set up like a separate account to receive the money. Or in some, they already have accounts set up to taking grants and external funds. And so you would just use that. But so on our end, we don't care how it happens. I mean, it could be one of your personal accounts that we send the money to. You and the town probably wouldn't want to do that, though.
And I will say, just from having the experience of, you know, working on the Avalonia Grant Matching Program, Abe's been, and I hope I'm not unfairly volunteering you for this, but I would say really great about if we have an idea, you know, running it by him and making sure that it's eligible and what are, you know, how to kind of frame it and make sure that it's, so it's not like we just have to throw something out there and then we don't know if it's going to have any viability. So I hope, again, I hope that's okay that I'm.
That's my job, right? Like, the, what we've tried to do with the program is to get rid of all like the grant bureaucracy on the front end. Where typically, there's an application period and you can apply once or twice a year. You miss it, you miss it, takes four months to get back to you, you fill in the application, maybe you got money, maybe you didn't. So on ours, it really is like, you're, the process is just to call me, send me an email, we hop on a Zoom, whatever, and talk through the project. The whole idea is meant to be that like, it's iterative. Even if someone has an idea and it turns out not to be a fit, that it's an opportunity for maybe me to connect them with somebody else or in a local town who's done something, or to say, well, that doesn't work, but this could work if you're interested in sort of tweaking this and doing that. So the idea is that like, yes, we're providing the funding, but that we're also partnering with folks on these projects. Like even for patronicity, right? So there's a fundraising coach that's assigned from patronicity, that's the crowdfunding platform. So Cameron works with all of the Connecticut, the Sustainable CT projects to help them put together their crowdfunding page, develop a fundraising strategy, like run the campaign from start to finish. So there's support on that end too. Like, we know that crowdfunding is hard, we're not experts in it. So we're also not asking people to just like, all right, go out there, raise $10,000, no problem, it's easy. I mean, like, that's really the hard part of the, the whole process, right? We've gotten rid of the application, you actually don't submit an application when you apply for this. It's like, it's a call, that with me is the application. And a lot of the time, I mean, I talked with someone today who, they had an idea, it's a clear fit, they clearly had the ability like to implement it, they had approval from the town. So I said, okay, great, here's a link to patronicity, get started on the crowdfunding page, you can be live tomorrow. So the whole idea of the program is that like, it turns around when you're excited, when there's interest, when there's sort of like engagement on an issue, and you can actually act. And then the hard part is saying, okay, now get people to pony up and part with their dollars.
I'm curious, is it, is it better to be relatively finite with an opportunity that you want to submit? Or is a broad based solution something that would be more attractive? You know, looking at the town, you know, possibly a biodiesel reclamation process with the restaurants around town, something of that nature? Or you talked about sustainable energy or renewable energy generation through solar arrays in including possibly storage, energy management associated with the facilities to keep, you know, costs down and manage those. Is it better to be quite specific? Or if you were to go after an activity to be more town wide, is it, is it, is it better to kind of look at all the aspects of it and include them in the crowdfunding aspect of it? Any thoughts?
Do you mean, is it better like, in terms of being eligible on our end? Or better from like a fundraising and engaging the community perspective?
Fundraising, raising the community, because I, I would suspect on your end, if it has, you know, kind of teeth to it and it looks like it's something that's viable and would generate a sustainability approach to what the town was trying to do, it would, it would probably be reasonable to support it. But from a crowdfunding standpoint, having no experience or very limited experience in that space, just curious as to what your thoughts are.
So, I mean, like, the first thing is that tangible projects are, I mean, all sorts of projects have been successful. There's like 100, I think 167 that have been completed so far. We just passed the $2 million mark invested between crowdfunding and, and our map. So like, and that's in less than two years. So there's been a ton of engagement, tons of excitement. There's, I think, 8,000 donors to the projects cumulatively at this point. So with the vast majority coming from Connecticut. So like, by and large, one is that the crowdfunding has been successful. I don't know, you know, exactly what it is, but I would say 90% of projects are either successfully hit their fundraising goal or like come close enough to where we still give the match and they can still go out there and do the work. So one is that like, just in general, folks have been successful. But certainly, the tangible projects where, where something goes in the ground, right? It's something that people can see and understand, those are the ones, if you guys were looking to like, to start with a project and to get something that people were excited about, I mean, like, so tree planting, always successful, pollinator pathway, always successful. The composting projects really have been like very, very, very successful because all of those are, they're problems that people can understand, there are solutions to them that are real, that are visible, that people can touch, that they can get involved with. So those are the things that like, just, I mean, that doesn't mean that that's the right project for you guys to take on. But if you're looking at a menu of them and you think, hey, let's start with something that we think we can achieve. I think like, that's usually the right way to go about it. And then it being something that's town wide opposed to, I don't know, residing in a, affecting or residing in like a smaller segment group, whatever, hasn't been, I haven't seen any correlation to that with like, that it's a townwide project that involves all these different entities and brings everybody in. I mean, it potentially widens your base in terms of crowdfunding and partners that you can have to help with the fundraising lift. Because like, I mean, that's really it, is that if there's a core group and it's the four of you guys doing the fundraising, it's just like, we all have limited networks. So I would say more, more important is just doing something where you know that you can, that the community can understand it, that it's an issue that they understand too, right? Like food waste, everybody gets that. Carbon sequestration, people might not think about that for trees that much, but everybody knows that like, trees are important for fighting climate change. And they provide other benefits and they're pretty and they give habitat for critters. So like, great, easy campaign to get people excited about. But then you just, you want to bring other folks in who can help with the fundraising, who can volunteer, who can support the actual implementation of the project. I, I'm not sure if that was totally what you were getting at with your question.
It was actually spot on, covered it nicely, thank you.
If we take like a composting one as an example, I think the, I like that one because we have money for it. So like, this, this is a weird position and in some of these, we've got money reserved for projects. So I'm like out here trying to sell people on taking our money to do these projects. So it's an easy job and I'm giving away money, right? Like, it's not a hard sales job. But that's one that we're always promoting because we've got this money, we want to spend it. And it's also a crisis in the state and towns are trying to figure out what to do right now to address solid waste. But like, for that type of project, yeah, I would choose a townwide one, where you can either set something up at the transfer station and then you can message it out to everyone in town. You can all participate in this program, everybody can be a part of this, donate. Whereas if you target a particular neighborhood and say, hey, we're gonna set up a composting, a couple of bins or a multi bay system or something and it's just here in this part of town, sure, that's harder because you can't get as many people excited about it. Maybe there's some question about it feeling like exclusive or folks who are territorial, something like that. So for some projects, I would certainly choose townwide ones, one, because they address the issue better. But two, because it just like, it broadens your outreach and it makes you able to, to get the word out to everybody.
Is there an example, I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Has this been done in North Stonington before? Do we have an example or of a, of a grant that has gone through in years past?
Yeah, so I think the Avalonia Land Conservancy is the one for the Sheets Family Forest. Where they were raising, so they had a bunch of money raised already, they had grants and other stuff. But there was a parcel, I think Alexis, I know you know this much better than me.
Putka Road, it was on Putka Road. And it was, I think it was, and I'm jogging my memory, but it was from my recollection, something that the town had originally tried to have pass in terms of allocating that budget to be able to contribute to Avalonia to help them purchase the property. And it didn't go through successfully. And so in an effort to try to still be able to help Avalonia with the purchase of this property to have it be in Avalonia Land Trust parcel and owned by them, we went the Sustainable CT Grant Matching Program route. And that, to my knowledge, was successful, Abe, you would.
It wasn't necessarily like the, um, okay, so let's say, the fact that you guys didn't know about it may mean that it didn't garner huge public awareness and support. But they were successful in raising the money, right? I think that one was a combo of some large donors contributing, some other grants that were out there. So the crowdfunding may have been a bit more limited. Nearby in Stonington, they ran, this was a town led project, but they ran a project to create a big community garden right at Town Hall, which was super successful. They're about to launch, this isn't the town, these are just some local folks are about to launch a project to, to bring like a tri-shaw. So like a tricycle, it's a rickshaw, but like as an electric car.
Wow, that's cool.
They're gonna bring that to town and are, you know, soon to launch a $6,000 crowdfunding campaign to, to purchase the, the tri-shaw, actually. So, I mean, we'll see, I don't know that that's gonna be successful. But in New London, there've been a bunch of projects that have gone through successfully. So in your guys' area, there have been a bunch that have worked out. The only one in town, though, unless I'm forgetting something, is the Sheets Family Forest.
But I'd like to, I'd like to put in on the sheets, the problem is, as far as the crowdsourcing, I'd like to know how much of the donations came from people in North Stonington? Because unfortunately, I'm sure it's a very small percentage of the total that was contributed.
Yeah.
I don't know how to get past this. You know, we got Avalonia, we got to the, enough, barely, for the matching grants. And it did close two weeks ago, so the property's there. But I don't know how to get people sufficiently motivated. That project didn't, as far as getting people sufficiently motivated.
Yeah, so I'm, if you're actually curious and want to check where donations came from, if you go on the patronicity page for that project, you can click on donors and it shows geographically where they donated from. So one, like, we could take a look, a lot of them are from surrounding towns. So I'm looking at like rotten, lead year, they're a bunch in North Stonington. Yeah, that, I mean, sometimes it just depends on the, I mean, sometimes it can depend on the project. You would think that preserving public land is an attractive project, although it's often seen sort of as that there's money for that, that the land conservancies are gonna do that. So it's not something that, again, it doesn't create like a tangible thing. It doesn't create something new and exciting for people to look at, to say like, look at this problem that we solved. So sometimes it is like, I mean, just, there are projects that are more conducive to crowdfunding. One, land preservation projects are often hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. So where the match fund is even relevant for those is only if, you know, where we have these unusual situations where there's a small shortfall that's stopping you from closing something out. When we first launched the program, we supported a campaign by the Trust for Public Land in Colombia and Lebanon to preserve 200 acres, something like that. And they had a $30,000 shortfall, so we funded it. I would think, I mean, yeah, engaging residents and getting them to support projects is, it's hard, right? Like, this is what we're saying, the fundraising is the work, where you have to go out there and you have to get people excited about it. And where you have to get other partners from the beginning. So I'm not intimately familiar with the campaign for the Sheets Family Forest. But, I mean, sometimes there can be a, when we do projects that are led by development professionals, typically like fundraising is done in a different way than crowdfunding, right? You're going out for grants, you're seeking large donations. And so the mindset of the folks leading those projects isn't always like, okay, let's engage people, let's go out and get those $20, $50 donations. It's like, how do we maximize our time? And of course, this makes sense from a fundraising perspective. But sometimes that doesn't, the, the two viewpoints on raising money don't always totally gel. But yeah, it's hard to engage people. That's sort of why I'm suggesting like, that you start with a project that identifies a problem that other people know about, or even if it's not a problem, that creates something fun, exciting, that people can understand, that they care about, and that's manageable. Launching a campaign and starting with a $15,000 crowdfunding goal for your first one, that's probably a heavy lift. Whereas if you start with something that's small and you're looking to raise 5,000 and it's 2,500 through Sustainable CT and 2,500 to crowdfund, that's a much more manageable goal, where people can look at it and go, my 50 bucks matters here. I can understand how I'm gonna help them get to it. Whereas when you're looking to raise $20,000, it's a tall order to get people to throw $20 at something where they say, yeah, but they need so much, how many of me are gonna donate 20 bucks to make this happen?
And I just have a quick question, and I think I know the answer to this, but because there is a tie in, you know, to, let's say, a Sustainable CT action item, the, the, I would imagine that the entire project needs to be finalized, including all the grant, all the crowdfunding, as well as the actual implementation of the project that the money was raised for in order for it to get any kind of consideration for the points for that particular action item. Is that correct? Like, it's not just the, oh, we fundraised for it and now we're planning on doing it, you know, in October, but October's after the August 24th deadline, so is that correct? Everything has to be finalized, okay?
It has to be either done or substantially implemented. I mean, there's some, not everything is like, you put it in the ground or you purchase a parcel of land and now you own it. There are some things that are ongoing projects. If you're running an energy campaign, so like in Branford, they ran a campaign to, really what they were covering were the cost of like advertising and paying for contractors who would serve as consultants to help homeowners make energy efficiency solutions in their homes, that's gonna last for a year. So in that case, those guys don't have to wait until the very end of that year long program before they can apply. If it's going on, is in the process, they could apply for that and say, you know, here's what we've done so far, we're gonna do this for another six months. Likewise, if you're, I mean, even if you're building a community garden and most of it's up there and it's just completely finished, to my mind, go ahead and apply for it and you can earn points. Whereas, but like, it can't just be, we finished the crowdfunding campaign, there's gotta be something to show. Crowdfunding, the, the thing for which you earn points.
Got it. No, thank you. Any other questions for Abe?
I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's obviously a great opportunity and resource and it's just a matter of figuring out what we can do so that we know how to do it, this is what, where we, where we get started, right? Where we do.
Yeah, yep. So like, one thing too.
I don't know how typically, you know, people go about it, Abe, but it sounds almost like, I, I almost, the first thing that comes to mind is that, you know, as we're going through different action items and getting inspired by, oh, no, I really wish that we could do this, but do we have the budget from a town perspective to accommodate that? You know, where's money coming from? That's where it's sort of like, and this could be a good opportunity for the, the grant matching program. Is that sort of how usually people kind of come up with the initial idea?
Yeah, if it's projects that are coming from like a Sustainability Committee that's embedded in the town, yeah. I mean, if it's a nonprofit. I mean, if it's a nonprofit or if it's just a group of people, there there's, they know there's no town money that's coming for the project. Uh, yeah, so we don't want to ever duplicate existing municipal dollars. So if the town's got money that's going towards something, uh, the idea is to say, i- there's money there. If there's still a shortfall, great, come to the match fund for the shortfall. But we're not looking to just double the town's dollars, or we're certainly not looking to replace it where this was funded. Oh, but great, there's this matching grant program and it's eligible, so let's divert those 10 to something else and let's use Sustainable CT for this. Uh, if there's money reserved for something from the town, that should go from the town's budget. If there's, you know, money that's not going to fully fund it, we come in for the shortfall, not to match. Although like some amount of seed money from the town is fine, it could go through. But so, yeah, like for you guys, I would think typically it's if you're, i- if as a committee, you're sitting there and thinking about things that you could do. And yeah, the logical step I think would be to see, does the town have the money to do this? Or the capacity for, you know, maybe DPW could uh lend staff and equipment and we could actually do this for free. Sure, if that's the case, great, go ahead and do it for free because it saves you guys having to crowdfund. But if not, that's where the match fund can come in. Or then, um, I think the other part is if you're hearing projects from community members who want to do something, obviously like for them, feel free to shoot them my email, send them my cellphone, there, I mean, anyone is welcome to reach out. Again, the projects don't have to come from the committee, from the town, folks can reach out on their own. Uh, and then some of the other things could be if there are partners that you're looking to engage or if there are, you know, the schools are a great place to do projects. And if you're thinking crowdfunding, they're also a great place to crowdfund. They've all got PTAs, they all have, you know, they can send kids home, uh, thousands of kids home with a flyer that says, here's this project that we're doing, please donate to it. Your kids go to this school, they're going to use this project, this program, whatever. So um, those are ones too where you could look at it and say, hey, we'd like to do something with the school, with this community group, whatever. We know there's no budget, okay, great, let's, you know, partner and crowdfund. So um, if you guys don't have other questions, I mean, obviously if stuff comes up, give me a call. I'm happy to attend another meeting and bounce ideas around. Uh, but hopefully we can find something that works for you guys. I mean, in an ideal world, there's no need for this. The town and Mike, they they just give you guys a blank check, they cut your money anytime you want to do something and you don't need the match fund. Which is probably the case, uh, I I'd love to chat with you guys about whatever you're thinking.
Awesome, Abe, thank you so much for joining, we really appreciate your time and uh, this is really, really helpful.
Yeah, of course. Great to meet you guys, I hope to talk about projects soon. All right.
Thank you, enjoy Seattle.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye. Okay. Um, so is, you know, does anybody, I I think this was just sort of a preliminary first uh info gathering session on on the grant matching program, but does anybody have anything so far that they've kind of been ruminating about from a project standpoint? I mean, John, you mentioned a couple specific pieces, so maybe um.
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, I do have a couple of ideas. Um, I I I think it's great that he structured this so it's relatively easy and we can reach out to him and say, hey, here's the concept associated with it. Because all the things that I'm looking at doing do require a relatively sophisticated approach. You've got to be able to understand what the power utilization is, how the power is being utilized, how you'd store it, how it would benefit the town. Because again, you know, the only, the only way I would approach this from is from a a standpoint of how it's going to save the town money to be able to use renewables for a sustainable effort. And um, looking at that type of approach, it's a little bit initially labor intensive, but maybe that's where the crowdfunding comes from, to be able to do some of those base level studies and figure out if it's a viable opportunity to be able to install some of these services, um, to be able to look at the overall um utilization of energy from the town and be able to store it. So they've got a sustainability effort, it's hardened during storms, so they've got some backup, that type of thing. It's all, it rolls off the back of my head and and the way, because of what I do, but it's it's a little bit complex. So I I want to think about how I would present it back to Abe and how it would be presented to the town so they could look at it and say, hey, this is kind of interesting and like the concept behind it because it's a little too techie right now in my head, anyway. But yeah, got a few concepts around it, yes.
Yeah, because it, so so if I understand correctly, um, based on what he was talking about from a dollar max perspective, it would be not afford the entire project budget, but rather more of maybe like in a feasibility assessment kind of thing.
Right, right. And I think from the, and there are aspects of it that you could look at, and again, without getting into too much of the details that you could look at and say, okay, there might be an opportunity to set up a storage, be- because from what I've seen in the town and I've only had visual views, I haven't gone in and done any inspections. We do have solar arrays installed in many of the locations, but we don't have any storage associated with them. So as we're collecting the power, we can only use it as it's being generated, not at at a later date. So some of the programs, because the matching funds for sustainability on renewables is a little bit higher, um, you may be able to look at doing some things that actually have an impact where you can do some uh base level assessments and um and and put some hardware in place to be able to benefit the town from an overall utilization standpoint. But again, uh, I want, I'd have to sit down and look at it. But to your point, yeah, I mean, just to be able to do a base level study to see if it's viable and the town finds interest in it and it does have a long term saving uh uh impact, yeah, that's a good approach as well.
Okay, yeah, if you want to, um, I don't, to, you know, my point earlier and Abe echoed that point, he's totally willing to hear pitches. So if you want to put something together, the last one that I did when when it was for Putka Road, he kind of, he had the call, but then I think I put together with Avalonia's help, um, like a pair of that. You know, he wanted something in writing that he could at least point to the fact that we had the ideas sort of solidified. Um, but we could certainly, you know, run any of that by him.
Yeah, I will, I'll I'll take some time and draft it up and and put it together and and uh input it to the committee and put it, Dave, and see what some of the thoughts are on it. And obviously, I'd like to be able to get input from the rest of the team on it to look at it and say, hey, this this looks pretty good. Maybe make an adjustment here, uh, you know, tweak it there, that'd be great. But yeah, be happy to, that would only take me a few minutes to throw something like that together.
Great.
I just, I just have, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page here. Um, so we have a short term goal, right, of end of August to get X, Y, and Z done. And then maybe, I guess, perhaps identify the projects that might need grants and then also work on those because those are probably going to take longer, right? So any grant money that we're in, we are hoping for is not going to probably happen for a while, right? It's going to be a longer term project.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we have a choice. I mean, if we did something that was pretty, like, let's say it was to hold a fundraising, to hold an event that was, you know, in September, for example, and we could, I don't think it has to be long term, but I think we have the ability to just kind of have this be a rolling consideration of, you know, somebody has an idea and we just need need some fundraising behind, you know, we need the money behind it in order to get it off the ground. And then we could kind of utilize and leverage the this grant matching program as a possible method or, you know, way in which we can get access to the funds to be able to make it happen. So I think we can do something shorter term, but I think it just um is a matter of, A, do you think it's, you know, like, if it's a smaller project, let's say it's like a $2000 project and we think, oh, you know, we can bang this out, get the fundraise in two weeks or something like that. Um, I think it could certainly be um shorter term and even be done, you know, maybe not by August 24th, but maybe sooner after. But um, I think this just could be just like continuous, basically in perpetuity of just being able to access it when we need to. It it doesn't need to by any means be, um, I think the deadline for the Sustainable CT Silver Certification Application is completely independent of any sort of um grant matching applications because uh the whole Putka Road um discussion came way after we had already, you know, that that was continuously after we um got last year's uh bronze recertification. Um, and and Pat, I don't know if, because you referenced it and I I have this in the agenda. Do you think that, I know you're trying to get the pollinator pathways off the ground. Is that something that you think, you know, this, you would um seek grant matching um from Sustainable CT to kind of get that moving?
Um, well, the thing, the things that would be, it's no big amounts. The things that need money is um just printing and basic uh PR stuff. And if we are offering plants to help people, um, this isn't something that would would happen till the fall because we're not in a good planning period, right? Even though we have all this rain, we're not in a planning period right now. So that's, you know, in the fall. And the other thing is just a pass through. The metal yard signs that people could acquire are $10, you know, that money comes in, money comes out. That's uh, you know, we buy that, we buy them, they buy them back. So the only thing, those are the only um costs. And uh, as far as any plants that we bought to offer to help people, uh, that wouldn't happen anywhere until uh September, late September, October.
Well, I will say, just um, again, from just my very limited experience, it takes a while to get every, you know, unless and there is a way to get it done really quickly, but I would say it tends, that process dragged out quite a bit. So just by the time, you know, you you put the verbiage together, to put on the crowdfunding, the patronicity or whatever it's called. Um, they used to have a different one, that's what I had stuck in my head, but I think they've changed it. So I would say, you know, it's not, my initial assessment would be it's not too early to start kind of, you know, thinking about the budget sources and uses kind of thing. And then um, uh, what, you know, putting together the crowdfunding, uh, if if you want to, if you think that there's meaningful, you know, if if that's something that you'd want to um use the grant matching program for, I would say it's, you don't have too much lead time, even though it seems kind of far out.
Well, the um, the major project is I'm I'm having difficulty keeping community members on a committee. Um, and this had, this should be a town committee, not a garden club committee. And the only people that are sticking with it are people that are in the garden club, some of which don't even live in North Stonington. But uh that's, um, yeah, that's where I am.
It does seem like potentially a great little project just to get our feet wet.
Yeah.
Because it's
Exactly.
And it's approachable and it's tangible, like all, it sort of checks all the boxes that he was talking about. Like, everyone loves flowers and butterflies, right? So like, what a great opportunity to just to engage with that crowdfunding process, see what happens, right? Because, I don't know, I mean, I've never done that before and it sounds like there's support in it. So, you know, easy enough to raise money for a couple extra signs and um some sort of, you know, other supportive things. Not yet, no, before we jump into, not even before, but as we're thinking about jumping into, you know, big energy projects, you know, first we work on some butterflies and.
No, that's a really good, that's a really good thought.
Yep.
And so maybe, if it's okay, uh, now, I was just going to kind of quickly, I know, you know, we're kind of taking a lot of time already, so I don't want this to drag on too too long, certainly, but wanted to quickly debrief you. And Pat, um, you have been on both of these calls, so please feel free to jump right in and and take over. Um, but I was just going to mention, we had the first two meetings with the fellows and I um stopped my screen share and pulled up something else. But what they, um, as I kind of referenced originally, they really historically have done the legwork of figuring out, all right, where are we, what's this whole point system? Um, because it's really hard for us as not Sustainable CT mapping experts and portal experts, like, you know, they have this whole portal thing. Um, it's really hard for us to navigate and kind of piece everything together. So um, what they did in the latest meeting, which was what we had requested, was put together sort of the, um, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going to share my screen. Um, oh my gosh, why isn't it letting me? Sorry. How much I use you, you think I would decide on it? Oh, I know why, I know why I can't find it, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. So what they did was they essentially put together um what we can just recertify. So because the program has renumbered, you know how Abe was referencing the fact that, well, this forestry initiative used to be part of action item 2.9, but now it's part of 1.0. You know, they just, they just do this every year where they kind of rejigger everything. And so um, as a result, some of them we already get credit for, we clearly can get recertification for it and it's just a matter of renumbering and putting it into a different spot within the system. So um, he's itemized those and laid those all out for us. Those are going to be really, really simple and even, you know, they can move stuff around as well as the fellows. So not a lot of legwork on our side on this, um, this first actions that only require renumbering category. Um, there is, uh, you know, he didn't name where we could, we didn't get points previously. My understanding is that um, the way that the program, like, while we didn't get points for these previously, so we're on a recertification of the points, the way that it's structured is now we have done something and we did submit for it. So now the way that that is situated, we can get credit for it as is. So it's sort of like we're going to be getting bonus points from something that originally didn't get credit. But then, yeah, so they also put together this actions that required renumbering and revision. So this is basically what I call like the low hanging fruit of everything that we have previously submitted, where we have some documentation or some demonstration that we have tried to go for credit for that area. And we did not get the credit for it in past applications because of something. And he provides the feedback of why, um, when the Sustainable CT Committee reviewed it, they provide feedback on, you know, the map does not show every retail option listed in the inventory, um, inventory. So please update the map by adding the rest of the businesses and to finish determining which ones are women owned. So it's a matter of something's already done and we just need to do a little bit more legwork in order to get there, to get the full credit because we didn't get points um beforehand. And then there's also, um, so there's a bunch of these. And then there's also a section all the way at the end, um, these, you know, no longer eligible. So we're just going to kind of cross those out of the scope, but other, including expired actions. And basically, these are, um, they didn't explain, Sustainable CT, when they reviewed our submission, didn't explain why we didn't get credit for these. But um, so we're just kind of, it's anybody's guess. But because the fellows have a little bit of a better, you know, they're almost like the intermediary between us and the Sustainable CT Review Team, um, they have certainly more insight than we would. They have attempted to at least provide some explanation of like, well, we can't tell you that this is why you didn't get credit for it because Sustainable CT Review Team didn't indicate it explicitly. However, um, you know, I think what you just need to do is create a list of primary vulnerabilities caused by climate change. Um, so th- these are also sort of what I, what I would consider like maybe low hanging fruit, section B of, you know, it's not as much of a slam dunk because we don't have the the committee, um, the review team feedback explicitly stating what is needed to get the points, but it's at least something that we know, you know, kind of can surmise what we need to do in order to get the credit for it. So what I asked them to do, um, where we, we're meeting weekly, um, I think it's Tuesdays at noon with the fellows to, you know, kind of like uh make sure that we're on track and have them um be able to sort of continue to update the system when we finish different um uh action items to try to, you know, like sort of close it out, like, okay, we did for this action item, we're going to submit everything and basically have that finalized, um, so that when we go to press the submit button for the whole application, that one has already been fulfilled. Um, uh, what I asked them to do for the next meeting is to provide, and we should have this by early next week, the points associated with each of these, so we get sort of like where we stand and um, based on what we have. the points associated with each of these. So we get sort of like where we stand and um, based on what we have currently because we need uh, 400 points. And then what would we earn if we just finished all of these successfully? So to get sort of a snapshot of where we are and then what do we need to do totally from scratch? And, you know, really like, and obviously we can do as many different things from scratch as we want to, but just to know really what we actually need to embark on from just a points, um, you know, just to kind of close the gap to get the, to get, to get to 400. Um, uh, because some of these might just be really easy to just kind of piece together some more information. My other plan was once we have the points, because this is sort of what I did with Mike and Christine in the prior two years, is um, once we have sort of like the points associated with each of these and where we are and versus where we need to be. Um, I was planning on having a meeting with um, Mike and Christine to just go through these and, and certainly uh, I'll, I'll in um, open it up to the whole community if anybody, you know, wants to join. And I'll try to schedule it for if somebody like really wants to be there for that meeting, I'll, I'll make sure I accommodate your schedule. But basically the, my objective with that meeting is to sit down with Mike and Christine and say, because these are all going to be pretty familiar with them because they're all stuff that we already submitted for last year. So it's like, all right, do you think this exists? Like, do you think we can pull this inventory? Does this data exist where we just do add, you know, the women owned businesses on a map? And then say, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, here's where you get this. And then um, you know, just kind of piecing it together in order to get us over the edge. Or um, we review it, we see the comments on that particular action item and they say, well, despite this being the low hanging fruit, sorry, there's just no, we don't have this. Like they're asking for something that we're just not going to be able to produce. And then we at least know, okay, well, we're not going to get credit for that. Let's scratch this off the list. So that was my plan from a next step. Um, once I have the point system is sometime next week to have that meeting with Christine and um, Mike. Any questions or uh, issues with that sort of a next step approach from your side? Anything you'd like me to consider?
That sounds like it would be really helpful. I mean, I think coming from knowing nothing and kind of diving into this, for me at least, I feel like there's, there's two pieces. And I think Julie, you kind of pointed to this, like there's like the this submission of this big thing in a very small amount of time, that seems like a lot for someone who doesn't know too much about it. But putting some context around it, like we're this close, this stuff's the easy stuff. Here is tangible things we can do to move towards that if it's possible. And you know, as you're getting more information from those fellows, I mean, for me, I feel like maybe if you throw down, like we're extra hands in some way, right? So you say, okay, well, these very tangible things need to get done. I can only do so much. Mike can only do so much. Like who can do this thing? I'm interested in it being given a thing to do. That would be cool for me. And I think hopefully for everyone, because then the other piece of it is like, how can we make North Stonington a better place in a more sort of greater sense, right? I'm drawn to that also. So like, I feel like there's a little pressure right now to get this big thing done quickly. And it feels a little overwhelming, but because I don't know too much about it and
Right. And, and I appreciate that. And um, so the way that I was sort of conceptualizing this, um, very, very similar to what you were saying, but let me just run this by you and see if everybody agrees. Definitely if it's something where it's like, all right, you know, for example, I'm thinking Nita last year worked with me to put together um, a historical assets um, kind of inventory, because it was one of the criteria. Um, and we're actually going to resubmit that for this year. But I didn't know anything about, you know, the historical assets. So it wasn't something that I took on as an actual task, but I was sort of tasked with liaising with her and kind of fine tuning. She was like, what do you need? And what, you know, so it was not so much the, like myself writing it. I mean, some other, like, there were other equity toolkits that I like wrote them myself. So that was, you know, much more like I was doing the work, but there's also opportunities where it's not necessarily you have to do the work, but it's just sort of like being the point person to be able to kind of just like chase the person for the, the whatever. If it's a document or something that they're looking for. So that's definitely what would be extremely helpful once we kind of find team what we need. But I was almost thinking about it a little bit in terms of, you know, this is a very um, this whole undertaking is very like, uh, I was trying to say action oriented, but that's, you know, action items, um, task driven. And I was almost thinking like, well, one, once we kind of know where we stand and what we just need for that gap, then that's where kind of the more inventive, creative side of what do we want to do? You know, we, we need to get these points somewhere. Here's where sort of the, the broad reaching categories are that, you know, we can do something within that context, but you know, do we want to put together something this summer? Um, where it's either an educational campaign or, you know, something that's like a sustainability event or something like that, 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 that's like where the fun idea generation comes in and that I'll try to um, unless you are really wanting to do something, that I'll try to the extent possible to um, shoulder more of the like, all right, items that we just need to check, that are checklist oriented, shoulder that and kind of buffer that from this team and have the team be more responsible for like the cool initiatives that are kind of a little bit more forward thinking rather than just like we need to check the boxes kind of thing.
All right. Just, I, I guess the question then is like, how much forward thinking, big fun stuff can we get done in
Right.
four weeks, you know?
Right.
From, from an execution standpoint, Alexis, um, first, I agree with Craig. I think it's fantastic that the fellows can do the workforce to be able to go down through the list and say, here's the point system that exists. Here's what you've done so far. Um, is, is the intent to then review the list as, as, as part of this committee and look at where we might want to develop opportunities? And if we get to that point, is there any opportunity we can sort of take advantage of the fellows again and say, can you look through uh, um, the categories and see who's done what? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Okay.
Yeah, they can definitely do that because they've done that in prior years of um, being able to say, um, you know, Abe had it off the top of his head, but they can definitely look through prior submissions and say, yeah, in this category, here's what somebody else did.
That's great. That, you know, help eliminate a lot of the footwork. And if it's something that the town's interested in, it would help us execute much more quickly. So
Right.
Cool.
Right. Yeah. So maybe um, uh, what I will do is after the review meeting with, and again, anybody who wants to can join, but with Mike and Christine, where we sort of will know like exactly where we stand. Then um, maybe just like for consideration for next meeting, maybe going into it to kind of think about, okay, I'm going to go through the list. Here's what we haven't done um, in terms of sustainable action, sustainability actions. And like what kind of resonates with each of, you know, if there's, if you say, oh, I, I think we can really do this. And it's something that, you know, because a lot of it is just like old an event or um, you know, it, not everything is this big grandiose thing that would take like seven months to plan. So there are some things that could be done fairly easily, I think. Um, oh, and actually directly to that point, um, they provided, this is a generic document. It's not um, something that was customized for the town of North Stonington. But what they provided was this document called an accessible action, uh, accessible actions. And so this, can you see it? It's, it's um, I don't know if I'm sharing my screen correctly, but it says accessible actions inclusive. Okay. So this is um, what they're basically saying are like, a lot of towns have been able to use these as sort of the like low hanging fruit. Now, what this doesn't do and which actually I'll ask the fellows to do now that I'm thinking about it, is cross-reference this um, with the document specific to us to see, well, what of these have we not done yet? So therefore of these like accessible actions that are fairly deemed easy to do, what are we actually looking for that we haven't done yet? So I can ask them to do that too. Um, and then we could just review this list as um, like it's, it's basically crossing out anything that we've already done. Then we wouldn't, that would be new to us.
Yeah, that would be easy, right? Just sort of bold, the ones that are potential for us to do. And then just easy to look through and say, oh, that looks interesting. That looks doable. There's 10 points there and that's easy.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll have them do that. That's um, I'll ask them to do that.
I feel like we're on a list of going from talking theoretically to talking actually. So that makes me excited.
Good. And so on the next item, I'm just going to so don't again, um, I was just thinking this, we've kind of led into this a little bit, but I, I, I put this on the agenda again to make it be a little bit past just, you know, sustainable CT, we need all these action items because I've been sort of thinking in those terms. But you know, what are we doing kind of more go forward basis? And I, I listened to a really interesting, um, I don't know if anybody's ever listened to Freakonomics Radio podcast. Um, but okay, you're all pretty familiar with it. There was one on um, the, our obsession with lawns. I don't know if anybody listened to it. Oh, did you listen to it?
No, not that one, but similar. Yeah.
It was really good and it made me think of um, you know, sort of a little bit along the lines of, you know, I think there's a lot of overlap with pollinator pathways to a certain extent, but you know, uh, how, how there's just di- different ways from an educational standpoint to kind of maybe um, again, people aren't necessarily going to all of a sudden just do away with their lawns. Like one of the examples it cited was a guy who did away with his lawn altogether and just has like a big huge garden and doesn't have any like grass lawn of his, of his front yard. And you know, how many people are actually going to do something as draconian as that? But you know, there's baby steps. There's one, one example it gave was you need to mow your lawn every week. Maybe you do it every other week or do you need to wa- water it as often and things like that? Um, and it was just really fascinating. And I thought, you know, maybe even um, if there's some sort of if in conjunction with pollinator pathways or something that from an educational standpoint, um, you know, could just be a, a little bit of a an initiative to try to educate citizens of the town. Um, I don't know how much there is to do on the, I know there's, and this would be my question, but like what they do on the town level? Because there was also a big component of the podcast that was about um, actual municipal and state um, changes in, you know, highway management and things like that, like how, you know, silly it is to have mowing miles and miles and miles of grass on a highway separator, things like that. So I would, I was planning on asking Mike and Christine on the municipal level, what, you know, maybe there could be some adjustments there that could uh, help demonstrate that we're being more green in the, in the lawn department. But also just from like a towns person, I mean, I, I felt like, oh God, I'm going to do some things differently as a result of listening to the podcast. But it's stuff that you don't, you usually think about until you hear the actual data. So that was just something that uh, came to mind, um, as you know, maybe a potential like pamphlets at the library or, you know, something that's just kind of a lot, like an easy um, educational program. Or, you know, we could do like a virtual summit kind of thing, um, and invite people to join if they're interested in learning more. But um, I, I don't know if anybody had other kind of ideas or whether that even resonates with any of you, but that was just kind of what came to mind that I wanted to throw out there.
Well, first I, I'm, I love podcasts and you know, I'm obsessed with listening to them. So uh, I think it's a really interesting uh, kind of approach. Just simple things like putting things like that on the uh, North Stonington webpage. So the schools could be aware of them and go to the links and pick those up. And you know, various different people could listen to them and um, maybe even make recommendations from the ones they listen to, other ones they picked up on. That stuff sounds uh, like it generate a lot of, at least activity in that general space. Because that, that's just kind of fun to pass the time when you've, you know, driving in the car or you, you know, don't it's, it's a good way to kill time and learn something interesting.
I always wonder if we could do um, this might be um, over, uh, overextending myself, but I'm wondering if like, we could even have like a official um, just like simple website for the sustainable sustainability committee where we do just kind of like post fun facts that are kind of more education based or, you know, podcasts or things like that. But then could link to, you know, the, the town's Facebook could um, share the link when there's something new that's updated on it or something like that. But that it's more like a outreach campaign on different sustainability initiatives and things like that. Like, oh, you know, there's this great podcast, listen to this. And so it's more just um, like stuff like that. I wonder if we could do a webpage that um, sort of just helps people understand what we're doing and what, what's out there from a resource standpoint.
And that sounds like a toolfold idea where it could gain us sustainability points towards a silver rating as well as uh, an initiative where we might be able to get some funding for the web paging, webpage programming to be able to get that done and, and set up. So that's, that's a great idea.
Hmm.
I don't know how overextending that is. I think that's kind of educated community. I think that's a pretty cool concept.
Because for people who are, you know, sort of like interested, but don't really know, you know, like I, I, I just happened to subscribe to that podcast and I would have never gone in search of podcasts about lawns. You know what I mean? I wouldn't be like sitting there Googling, what can I listen to about lawns? But it just happened to come up. But if we sort of curate some content that's sustainability related, that, you know, when people are thinking about like, oh, you know, I feel like reading an article today or reading a book or something. Um, what, what, what's sort of a good resource in that department? So that might be kind of a cool idea.
I think you have some writing to do for uh, silver points in uh, grant programs.
Alexis, do you know off of like the current state sustainability website, if we could piggyback off that or just get a page for our own town off of that?
Hmm, that's a good question. That's a really good question. Let me find out about that.
Okay. Yeah. If they could just like give us a page or a link or something that, that way, we're not recreating the wheel and it ties into the official website.
Right. No, that's a really good question. And, and um, I was just on a different topic. I think that's called um, a vanity link or something where it's like, you know, it might not be specific to us, but it's like, it says North Stonington so that people, when they're clicking on it are like, oh yeah, this is for the North Stonington. Okay. Any other, I know we're running over as usual, but um, any other things that you want to talk about or bring forth to the committee? And do I have to, I guess, there's a section for public comment, but we, we, there is no public. So do I have, can I skip it?
Well, I guess, did, so we are on number five, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah. Okay. Okay, sorry. I'm like, I'm still on pollinators. Okay. All right. Yeah, no, you're good.
You know, I, I've got this wild one. I don't know how it relates to sustainability is. And honestly, the fear that I have in my head is that it doesn't, um, and it may head in the opposite direction. But we have um, a lot of walking trails in North Stonington, but what we, what we don't have, a lot of our bike trails. And I've noticed a lot of other community have bike trails and it actually attracts people to the town and, and to the um, I don't know, it creates interest in the community as a whole and it's not too intrusive. So it, I didn't, it, it's just one of those ideas I've had banging around in the back of my head that it would be nice if we could develop, you, maybe not a bike trail system, but at least one of the trails to have uh, full blown bike access possibly lightly groomed. So um, we could utilize it for purposes like that.
So um, um, I, I have a um, bookkeeping business and one of my clients, they're, they're huge bike riders. They're um, they're actually working on a project right now and I'll reach out to them. Um, they are trying to create a bike trail. Um, I know like in Groton, but you know, I think sort of some, some sort of tri-town effort. Um, I know they've asked me about the conditions of the roads and repaving in North Stonington because the paving is not great for, for a road bike rider. So um, I will reach out to him and ask him um, if North Stonington is on their radar as well.
That'd be cool. I, I, I mean, I, there's different types of bike riding.
Yeah.
You know, you can do road bike riding and actually I think the roads in North Stonington, although not spectacular, are pretty good for it. It's, and it's a beautiful place to ride your bike. I mean, it's just, some of the roads are gorgeous. But there's also mountain biking, um, that doesn't necessarily have to be highly technical. It's just to the ability to go into the woods, ride casually and enjoy yourself and, you know, go on a four, five, maybe seven mile bike trip that uh, isn't going to be something that you're going to be challenged by roads or vehicles or things of that nature. It's just to, and maybe even connect some of the routes so that you can mountain bike to a particular area and then get on a road. It's just to, it may even connect some of the routes so that you can mountain bike to a particular area and then get on a road and, and go a little bit further. I don't know.
Well, in North Stonington, we have a lot of state forests with a lot of trails that are like mountain bikeable. I've ridden on a lot of trails in North Stonington. Avalonia has, within Avalonia, a lot of different opinions, and it's a major controversy. But there are people that are trying to get a portion of the tri-town preserve. That's the one on Miller Road. It's about 500 acres altogether, not all in North Stonington, but most of it is. And trying to get a trail through there, I'm part of it. It's very political. And I don't know where it stands right now, but it's something that's tossed around, depending on who you talk to.
Yeah, I, I honestly, that was a bit of my fear, that it would be a political discussion, because it's a, I'm just not that interested in that type of dialogue. It was something the town were interested in, there were trails that were well suited towards it. I've actually ridden and approached many of the trails. I, I found it relatively difficult to ride on some of the trails. There are some actually up near where I live, but debris in the trails, the trails are really difficult to ride. And I'm not that bad on a bike, so it's just kind of that concept that if they're already appointed for that use or they're already available for that use, if we could somehow make it a little bit more comfortable, I don't know, just throwing it out there, just a thought. But that's interesting, Pat. I'll probably circle back with you at a later date, because I'm not aware of too many trails around here that you can utilize for bike purposes. That's interesting.
All right, then, I'm going to, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those again? Okay, I really want to say class dismissed, but.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks again for, yeah, your accommodation over the scheduling change. But is everybody still okay for the next one being, I think it's like not next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday? I'm just gonna double check, but that one is still okay for everybody?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. All righty, well, have a good evening and good luck in the storm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.